Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for attending. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call, please. Gladstone?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Kelso?
Here.
Bukai?
Here.
Wally?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Marshfield?
Yes, here.
Vernal?
Here.
Driscoll?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Here.
Faulkner?
Here.
Hinckley?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Kosher?
Here.
Leighton?
Here.
Seta?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Please join us, the invocation by Mr. Marshfield and pledge to our flag, Mr. Wilson.
Lord, as we gather this day, thank you for the opportunity to serve, and we ask for your wisdom and strength. Guide us and temper our wisdom so that our decisions are for the betterment of our county government and for the 19 towns and 45,000 residents from which we represent. Please help to make peace with yesterday and have an open mind and heart for today. We pray for the protection of our family and friends, our military, our law enforcement, our medics and firefighters. We ask that you keep us all distanced from enemies and their evil intents. We ask these things in your name, who shares our life and joy and then sorrow, in death and then new birth, and in despair and promise. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the free republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of our minutes from March 27th. Were there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, they'll stand as submitted. Communications.
Madam Chairman, all communications received have been referred to their respective committees for review.
Okay, there is no privilege of the floor. Are there any standing committee reports? We'll move on to resolutions. First resolution is number 63.
I bring that resolution to the floor and ask for its adoption. Second.
2023 budget amendment, legal aid to indigents.
I have a question. Do we know what portion of the partial reimbursements are to the total cost?
I do not. I'm actually what's.
I believe it's 50%.
Pardon?
50%.
Pretty good. 50% you said?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it's pretty high. I can't remember. Yeah.
Any other questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Resolution number 64.
I'd like to bring this resolution up and ask for its adoption.
Second.
And also going to have Shelley do a little presentation on it. It's late, but it's all well.
Everyone received a copy. Information from Shelley.
Hello. So, before the meeting, I put in front of all of you a little updated handout in regards to the Sydney mitigation projects that we've been working on for 13 years now. So as all of you know, the county has been supporting the village of Sydney throughout the mitigation of flooding impacts that they felt were from 2006 and 2011. After 2006, we acquired nine properties in a flood buyout. We then worked with the village to do an ARNE core study to determine what really would benefit the village as far as mitigation strategies. There was a strategy about building a berm around the village, which was a no-go. There were a number of things that the village had looked at. And then in 2011, the flood hit again, and this time we were really threatened with losing Amphenol, one of the largest employers in the county. Economic Development worked very hard to retain them and keep them in Sydney, and we're very successful in doing that. But as part of that, the village said, we have to figure out a way to protect our community. So we embarked on a very long, long-term community recovery strategy project where we talked about dueling what they basically are, remove people from the flooded areas to high ground. So we went on another flood buyout. As of today, we've acquired 132 properties in the village of Sydney, which is a lot of properties. We've worked with 2+4 Construction in the village to create two separate housing projects, one at Sherwood Landings, which was an LMI project, which is multifamily housing. And then the second, 2+4 Construction purchased the civic center from the village of Sydney and put senior housing units on the top two floors and senior meals on the bottom floor. Both of those projects went 100% back on the tax tools without a pilot in an effort to reduce the income tax base from all of the properties being acquired. And I'm giving you this background so you understand, this has been a culmination of projects along the way. So as we've been doing the buyouts, the village has been working with River Street Planning and some engineers from O'Neil and Fuss to design an engineered mitigation. So in 2011, we saw two different types of floods. In Middletown, we saw a flood where it raged through in the morning, overnight. The next morning, we were in dry, and we were able to go in and evaluate destruction. Houses knocked off their foundations, buildings torn down. It was a disaster area, but it was out, the water was out of there. In Sydney, a week later, waters roared in out of Weir Creek, out of the Susquehanna, and it continued to roar in two days later, and then the water sat there for nine days. Those houses absorbed all of that water. So you didn't see the mass destruction we saw in Middletown with houses off their foundations and destruction, but you literally had houses substantially damaged because it literally soaked the water right up to the ceiling timbers. When we tore those houses down, we actually found black mold in the attics. Timber's still black 12 years later because those houses literally acted like sponges. So the big issue for Sydney is with the Route 8 corridor where it is, and with the way the village sits and the railroad bed, it creates a bowl. So the engineers came up with this concept of building culverts under Route 8 that would allow the water to actually flow out of the village, reconnecting the floodplain on the other side by the industrial park, and flow back into the river quicker so that the waters don't sit there for days on end, destroying more homes and infrastructure. We only see about four or five inches of actual flood reduction from this, but what we do see is waters removed quickly, and we see enough of a move of the flood fringe to take several homes out of the floodplain, reducing their flood insurance. But we also see a lot more homes go from having first-floor flooding to basement flooding, which almost halves their flood insurance premiums. That makes the houses that remain viable for being reconstructed and for being able to purchase them, because in most of the homes we acquired, people were paying more in flood insurance premiums than they were on their mortgages, because flood insurance is so high, especially after the bigger water act took effect. So we wanted to do this project in order to make all that happen. So we're now at a point where the culverts have to be fabricated. They have to be created this year to be installed next summer. The village, however, has run into some financial difficulty, and there is a big balloon payment that has to be made in order to create the culverts. It is 100% funded by FEMA. There's actually no local dollars in this. FEMA is 100% funding it. But FEMA is a reimbursable program, so the money has to be upfronted, and the village doesn't have the money in upfronted. The IDA stepped in and tried to help, but for reasons that Glenn can explain to you, they weren't able to. And then Soil and Water has also agreed to step forward and help by doing construction management during the construction of this to make it work. So the piece we needed was the upfront funding. So Glenn and I met with the finance committee, and we explained all of this. So the resolution for you today is about the county upfronting that as a shared service for the village of Sydney. My office will take over the administration of the FEMA grant. We will walk it through to make sure that the reimbursements take place. We will make sure that Soil and Water is paid for construction oversight. There's money in the grant for administration and construction oversight, so we can cover any interest that we lose on the $5 million that way, and we can then order the culverts and then get them constructed next year. The whole project will close out in December of 2025. Questions?
Yeah, I have, I know where they're replacing the Doug Road Bridge by me. They figure it'll be next year at the earliest because metal is so backed up. Is that going to affect the culvert and the FEMA funding?
Not in this case, because there's actually no steel involved in this. This is pre-cast concrete, so they actually are paying a company to precast them. They've already got the bid award out. They know the company they're using. They literally can't pay the bill. So we're looking at this as a shared service with one of our villages to help them out.
I have another question. Where the old part of the Amphenol plant is still being used, I understand they're going to move that and tear that plant down, or is there plans for that?
There are plans to reconstruct it. They're not moving. The plating facility is staying, and Glenn might be able to answer that better than myself because I know he's working with them. But my understanding from the site plan we looked at in the planning board is that they're reconstructing that building and going to a cleaner plating process. Okay. So they are staying there. Amphenol's actually moving from.
Because some of them place like they're moving to the new one.
Yeah. Glenn, do you know they're staying there, right? They're just building a new?
Yeah, the new plating facility is going to.
It's going to be in the same area? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Hey, Shelley, you're not an engineer, I know, but on this diagram, it shows the culverts. The fatter one, I understand, but then they got two skinny tributaries off the main one. What's that about? You know?
What I do know is that the five of them will go in series.
Yeah.
And that allows the water to flow along Weir Creek so that they don't inundate the wetlands and flood the industrial park. That's why it kind of fans out the way that it does. It almost creates like an alluvial pan all by itself. And they will only have water in them when it's flooding. Otherwise, they'll be completely dry. So the next phases of this, which you'll see in the handout, the village has been working with the nature conservancy in my office to try and come up with ways of creating recreational uses down there on the open space we've created. And those culverts are, they're 20 feet by 10. You'll actually be able to walk through that to actually connect them to walking paths, to connect one side of the village to the other, so people don't have to cross that foreland anymore.
Yeah. It's a good program.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, we had it first and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. So carry. Resolution number 65.
I'd like to bring this up and ask for its approval.
2023 budget amendment, amend flood buyout 2016 to 18, as established by resolution number 89 of 2018, for the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, GOZER, Office of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for a voluntary flood buyout in the village and town of Sydney, and rescind resolution number 52 of 2024, Planning Department.
Questions on this? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Resolution number 66.
I'll bring resolution 66 to the floor and ask for its approval. Second.
2024 budget amendment, appropriation of unemployment insurance for 2024 personnel office.
Yeah, more self-insured for unemployment. Yeah, and this just replenishes the fund so that we can continue. Because like the town, I haven't ever got much problem with unemployment, but once they leave the county and go elsewhere and they get laid off, we pay part of that bill.
Okay, please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Resolution number 67.
I bring this to the floor and ask for its adoption. Second.
Occupancy tax disbursement approval, Department of Economic Development.
Questions for Glenn? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Malay? Resolution number 68.
I bring this to the floor and ask for its adoption. Second.
2024 budget amendment, transfer of funds, Department of Economic Development.
Please call the roll.
I have many questions on this. One is, what is the structure of this on-call rate?
No, we're on 68, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Turn the page.
Yeah.
Getting ahead of yourself.
Just a warning, I got lots.
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Malay? Resolution number 69.
Bring this resolution to the floor and ask for its adoption.
Nobody's going to second it, and then I am getting questions.
Just unseconded.
You're up to bat. Okay. My questions, one is, what is the structure of this on-call rate? Is any of it funded? And on the average, how many times over a 10-day period will this counsel attorney be called on the average? Zero, once, twice?
It's, it depends. I'll take the last question first. They call every day, twice a day, to see if there are arraignments. Usually, I would say they're probably have to go there between, in a week's time, probably between four and six times. So there usually are people in the morning and in the evening. Could be more than that, because I don't, I can't participate.
I think Joe presented to finance, it was between eight and 10 times.
Okay.
Over 10 days.
Because it could be, right, because it's two days, because it's twice a day. The structure, I don't, I guess I don't.
The rate, what's the rate? Because the future resolution has that on-call rate.
Right, it's 2,000 for the rotation.
$2,000 over a 10-day period?
Yes.
And is any of that funded?
Yes. It's reimbursed at a rate of, I believe, 675.
75% of it is reimbursed?
At $675.
Oh, 675?
Right, out of the 2,000.
Of the 2,000. That's it.
Any other questions?
I would just add to that, that 2,000 is a rate, but if they don't show up, they don't get paid, correct?
If they are required to be there and they do not come, they do not get paid.
Right, okay. So it's not an option.
Wait, sorry. So if there's no cases to be heard, arraignments, then they're not paid?
No.
Okay.
If they're, they call twice a day. If they say, in that day, they call, they say, nope, we got nobody last night, we got nobody this morning, they don't have to go, they still get paid.
Right.
But if they call and they say, yes, we have three arraignments, and the attorney does not show up, they do not get paid.
And they do not get paid what? For the day or for the 10 days?
For the 10 days, because if they don't show up, then they'll be, I would imagine they'd be taken off the rotation, because the whole point of this is that you have to have someone there and available.
Are justices paid the same way when they show up, or?
The justices are paid through the state ILS. We don't, no, but I mean, if they have a hearing and they get paid for showing up, if there's not a hearing, are they still paid? I don't, I don't know about the justices, because that's not something the county.
I think you're referring to the cap.
Right, the cap court and the justices in the cap court.
They get paid something.
They just increased it. I don't, they increased it, but I don't know how much it is.
She's not asking the dollar amount. You're asking is, if they do not have a case, do they get, still get paid or not?
Yeah, my understanding is the justices, if they don't have a case, they don't get paid. They only get paid for showing up.
Right. Well, and they're, because they're not on call. It's not a basis like that. So if there are no cases, they don't come, they get paid per diem. So it's a daily rate if they come. And what that is, I don't know, and that doesn't go through the county. As far as I know, I think that comes directly from ILS.
And do these CAFO attorneys, they come here?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that affiliated with the CAP thing?
Well, counsel at first arraignment was what brought on the CAP court. So when the state decided, when the state decided that counsel at first appearance wasn't mandatory, a lot of counties like ours, being so large, needed a centralized place. And the state has now approved that we have a centralized arraignment part, and that's what the CAP is.
Do we know how many attorneys will do this?
Probably not many. We're having a very hard time getting attorneys to do it. Yeah.
But every week, we need a CAFO attorney.
Every week.
Every week.
And it's seven, it's seven days a week.
Right, it's weekends also, so.
And just out of curiosity, the two thousand dollar rate was determined by other?
Well, it was.
Comparable to other counties or?
Well, it was broken down because of the assigned counsel rate is a hundred and fifty-eight dollars an hour. So it would be a lot more if you paid them by the hour at a hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So this was a compromise, if you will, for the two thousand. And there are counties that are paying more, there are counties that are paying less. But trying to get attorneys to do it is just.
We need more, if anyone knows, if anyone.
You mean, so the CAFO attorneys get paid this plus the hourly rate that they work? They get the on-call rate plus their hourly rate?
If they were, you mean, assigned, like not a public defender, you mean?
Right.
They get the, they would get the two thousand dollar on-call rate, period, is my understanding of it.
Not any hourly rate?
No, I don't believe so.
This is, this is set up for only at the arraignment. If the state establish that you have to have a defense attorney for arraignment offenses, not all the offenses, but if they're arraigned, they have to be arraigned at that time. The benefit to of this program is that it's set. Instead of getting called in the middle of the night to go wherever, eight o'clock and eight o'clock.
I understand that. But if we didn't have this on-call?
Right.
They'd get paid an hourly rate.
If we didn't have the on-call and we had attorneys going out for this, they would be billing it more than likely at the one fifty-eight.
Right. So I guess my question is, do they get the one fifty-eight plus the on-call? Take my small time where I work, that would be the case. They get their on-call paid plus they got the hourly rate.
Right. Well, I don't.
And I would surmise that probably that's the way it is, but I don't know.
Well, since we have such a dearth of attorneys, the only ones doing it at this point are public defenders, so.
Thank you, Amy.
Yep. Any other questions? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Posher?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Sada?
Yes.
Malay?
Yes.
Any questions for me, Mr. Chauvin?
I'd like to introduce Local Law Number Seventeen of two thousand and twenty-four, authorizing twelve- and thirteen-year-old licensed hunters to hunt deer with a firearm or crossbow during hunting season with the supervision of an adult licensed hunter. This is not nothing new. It's a pilot program, started two years ago, met with great success, and they're looking for county's approval, or this is for a public hearing for it, and so they can continue.
So then I'll bring up resolution number seventy.
I'd bring that up and ask for its adoption for a public hearing, second.
Public hearing on Local Law, number seventeen of two thousand and twenty-four.
So this public hearing will be held at our next meeting, April twenty-fourth, at one P.M. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? So carried.
I'd like to bring Local Law, or introduce Local Law Number Eighteen. Salary increase, district attorney.
I'll bring up resolution number seventy-one.
I'd like to bring resolution seventy-one to the floor and ask for its approval.
Is that Eric? Or Alan?
Alan. Thank you.
Public hearing on Local Law, number eighteen of two thousand and twenty-four.
And again, this public hearing will be held on April twenty-fourth at one oh five. Any questions on this?
Would I have, so this is dictated by the state?
Yes.
That we raise it from the current level to this?
Yes.
And that's what's happening to all the counties. They're going broke because of the state dictating all this stuff. And then we raise it here. We're saying, yep, state, we're, we got problems with the state, but we're good with this. And it's just going to feed other issues in the county that aren't dictated by the state. That's all I know. What's his current level of pay, do we know?
Two oh two?
It's two hundred thousand, four hundred.
What is it here?
Two hundred thousand, four hundred.
Okay, two hundred, two twenty-one. Thank you.
Okay, it's a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? So carried. This is next, Geno, again.
I'd like to bring Local Law, number nineteen, to the floor. Salary increase, public defender.
Bring up resolution number seventy-two.
I'd like to bring seventy-two to the floor and ask for its approval.
Okay.
Why is this one effective January first, twenty twenty-four, but the other one is April first, twenty twenty-four? Is there a reason why one is going back in time, this one, the public defender?
Well, we were rescinding the prior one.
Okay.
Just for curiosity, how many times a year would he be on-call?
It, they, that's determined.
Often?
It's one ten-day period a month.
Yeah.
Right. So, yes.
Would he be on ten times during the year or?
I mean, it could be as, as many or as little. I mean, it needs to be covered, so whoever has to do it, has to do it. Yeah.
Okay, this is a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? So carried. Resolution number seventy-three.
I'd like to bring that resolution to the floor and ask for its adoption.
Second.
Authorization for disposition of personal property no longer necessary for public use, quick to the board.
Okay, it's a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? So carried. We have a few not prefiled resolutions. I'll waive Rule Ten without objection. Bring up resolution number seventy-four.
I'll bring resolution number seventy-four to the floor and ask for its adoption.
Second.
Appointment of Delaware County Fire Advisory Board.
This is an annual appointment. It's a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? So carried. Resolution number seventy-five.
I'll bring resolution number seventy-five to the board.
Second.
Two thousand and twenty-three budget amendment, receipt of donations, K-9 program, sheriff's office.
Questions on this? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Kelso?
Yes.
Bukai?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Haynes?[1642.84]